Good evening, everyone. We're here for a city council meeting. It is May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. We'll start this meeting with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Drew. Solomon. Doyle. Estes. Scott. Laurenti. Wright. Modrick. Roberts. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next will be an invocation by Pastor Greg Blanc, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Grateful to be here with you again tonight. Just want to encourage you that it may not always seem like it, but you're valued and you're loved and you're respected. And most of us definitely here and watching on TV in the city realize that there's a lot of pressure that you're under. And probably most of us here would never want your positions, but just want you to know that you're valued. So, just wanted to tell you that before we pray. Are you ready? Can we pray? Okay, let's pray. Father, we open up this meeting inviting your presence here. Let your grace and your peace be evident. We are thankful that you love the people of Rapid City and want what's best for them. We're pleased for our state motto that declares, "Under God, the people rule." As a community, we're grateful to the men and women you have allowed to govern us. Give them wisdom as they bear the privilege and responsibility to lead the people of Rapid City, knowing their decisions impact many, many people. Lord, please bless Mayor Allender and the city council members, the police and the fire chiefs and the other officials here and their families as they serve the citizens of Rapid City. Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible of liberty and justice for all.
Now we're on to the adoption of the agenda. This is a time when we can adopt the agenda as is, or council members may make additions or changes to it. We'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to adopt the agenda with two changes. Number one, to move executive session to the location of item two oh five at the end
thousand seventeen is wildfire awareness month.
of the meeting and move item two oh five directly after general public comment, so
Whereas the city of Rapid City desires to provide an environment safe from wildfire
it'd be just prior to item eight.
while protecting the health and safety of its citizens, including all properties situated Give it a second by Jason Solomon. therein. And just to clarify, with that motion, if we're going to move executive, yeah, if we're And whereas wildfires threaten the environmental, economic, and social well-being of Rapid City residents while challenging firefighters' efforts to protect life and property. going to move executive session, we also need to move item number seven along with it. Is that okay with the motion maker and seconder? And whereas wildfire suppression costs represent only a small portion of overall economic impacts
I intended that to be.
Okay, so we have a motion to make that change. and do not reflect the total cost of catastrophic fires. And where did you say, after public, general public comment? And whereas residents of Rapid City have the responsibility to recognize the high risk
Right, yeah, two oh five will be right here.
Okay. Okay. of wildfire and institute safe and early evacuation plans, increase their homes' resistance All in favor of adopting the agenda with those two changes, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. to wildfire, and create fire-adapted communities to increase the safety and survivability And now I'm gonna, I'm gonna meet some folks down front. We'll have some awards and recognitions. of the public and emergency personnel. And whereas wildfire awareness month is an important opportunity for Rapid City residents and all South Dakota communities and fire service agencies to reduce risk of wildfire, increase firefighter safety, and enhance public safety and awareness through education on fire safety, preparation, and prevention. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, do proclaim May two thousand seventeen as wildfire awareness month in Rapid City. And with the theme for this year, "Do Your Part Before Wildfires Start," is a call for the residents of Rapid City to educate themselves and to take action to reduce the wildfire threat to their homes and help their community move toward becoming a fire-adapted community. And are there wildland firefighters in the room this morning? This morning? This evening? It's morning somewhere. Please come forward.
My name is Tim Weaver, Lieutenant Tim Weaver with the Rapid City Fire Department. I work in the Fire and Life Safety Division, and my primary job in the city is wildfire mitigation, the program coordinator we have in the city. Six years ago, we started the Survival Space Initiative with the goal to help our citizens understand the importance of living in an environment that's adapted to fire, since we live in an environment that really wants to burn. We're pretty proud of the fact that, of the progress we've made over the past six years. In that effort, we've accomplished quite a bit inside the city and around the city as far as fire adaptation. And I think we're getting the message out to the citizens of Rapid City about the importance of fire resilient landscapes and how to accomplish that goal. And we look forward to many more years to come. Now I'm gonna read another executive proclamation. Whereas baseball has a rich tradition in Rapid City from the barnstorming teams of the nineteen forties and fifties and the Rapid City Chiefs of the Basin League to the emergence of American Legion amateur and youth baseball. And whereas baseball in Rapid City first grew to local and regional prominence due to the dedicated efforts of many people, that continued interest grew into the national spotlight where today, in many parts of the United States, mention Rapid City and baseball in the same sentence, and one man's name comes to mind, Dave Plouffe. And whereas Dave Plouffe began managing the Post Twenty-Two American Legion baseball program in nineteen sixty-five and immediately turned it into a winning program, he would go on to serve as their coach for an impressive forty-seven years, never with a losing season, winning thirty-three state championships and taking them to eight American Legion World Series appearances, winning the national title in nineteen ninety-three. And whereas during his career, Dave Plouffe amassed two thousand four hundred eighty-three wins, won eighteen state titles between nineteen seventy and eighty-seven, which is a national record, and guided several dozen players to the major leagues, minor leagues, top colleges in the nation, and countless players who went on to succeed in various career fields. Some of the major league players Plouffe managed include Mark Ellis, Dave Collins, and Kelvin Torv. And whereas among the greatest gifts given by Coach Plouffe were the many life lessons he provided to the players he taught and the respect he earned from competing coaches, players, and fans of baseball from across the country. And whereas Dave also served as Rapid City Central's wrestling coach for an impressive twenty-five seasons, as coach of the USA Junior Olympic Baseball Team in nineteen eighty-five, and participated as a member of the mayor's Civic Center Resolution Task Force, and is a member of the Rapid City and Alexandria, Minnesota Sports Hall of Fame. And whereas Dave Plouffe has served as a leader of young men on the baseball diamond, but has also served as an inspiration and role model to young men, women, and people of all ages with his winning attitudes about life of all sports and utilizing and taking an individual's talent to the utmost potential. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, proclaim May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen as Dave Plouffe Day in Rapid City and urge all citizens to recognize Dave for his contributions to baseball, the community, and his citizens through his life's dedicated work and service. Dave's not here tonight. I'm not aware of any family members are here. Are there any family members of Dave Plouffe in the audience? Dave is in Rapid City Regional Hospital, fighting a very serious illness and can't be here tonight, but have one of his former players and current Rapid City Community Resources Department head, Jeff Barbeer, who'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not gonna repeat the amazing facts that were in that proclamation. I think they speak for themselves, but I would like to take this opportunity to thank Coach Plouffe as a former player for all that he did for us, both on the field as well as off, and as well as take the opportunity to express my sincere best wishes to Coach Plouffe and his wife Patty moving forward. Thank you.
Come on up. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the May two thousand seventeen Veteran of the Month recognition to Jerry Simmons. Mr. Simmons' calling to join the United States Air Force was prompted by the events of nine eleven, which occurred during his senior year of high school. He, along with twenty-five other young men and women from his graduating class of two thousand two, chose to enlist in order to defend our country. Mr. Simmons spent ten years in the Air Force as a mechanical engineer, deploying twice to Kuwait and Kyrgyzstan. He managed a three hundred and fifty personnel safety program and oversaw a multimillion-dollar supply and deployment program for his squadron. He supervised a crew of fifteen workers and three airmen while deployed. For six months, he was the only craftsman on site to oversee maintenance needs on camp to include electrical, water, and structural. He served in the base honor guard and had the privilege of rendering last honors to many World War II veterans and two active-duty members. During his military career, Mr. Simmons was decorated and awarded Senior Airmen Below the Zone, One Army Commendation Medal, Two Air Force Commendation Medals, Three Air Force Achievement Medals, Three Air Force Good Conduct Medals, One Global War on Terrorism Medal, and Non-Commissioned Officer of the Quarter for Honor Guard. In addition, he was coined by a two-star Army Commander and numerous colonels, majors, and chiefs for doing work above and beyond what was asked. Mr. Simmons is currently serving as the Youth and Young Adults Director at the First United Methodist Church. He helps serve a meal once a month to the homeless of our community, which is called "Come to the Table." In the near future, Mr. Simmons is scheduled to take the youth group on a week-long mission trip to the Blackfeet Indian Reservation in Montana. He strives to teach the students to be the hand and feet of Christ. He also volunteers at the Hope Center and the Cornerstone Rescue Mission. Mr. Simmons has been serving our country since two thousand two with dedication and sacrifice, making him an excellent Veteran of the Month. His example of service makes him deserving of this honor, and we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you, Jerry Simmons.
It's a great honor, and I love this community and I love being a veteran, so thank you.
I thought I was going cross-eyed trying to read some of the, some of the words. In partnership with the Elizabeth Dole Foundation and the VA Black Hills Caregiver Support Office, we are pleased to present our Hidden Hero of the Month recognition to Jessica Brimer, Brymer. Brymer, got the easy one wrong. Jessica Brymer for the month of May. Ms. Brymer was born in Valley City, North Dakota, and moved to Rapid City when she was just three years old. She attended Zion Lutheran School, Rapid City Christian, and graduated from Central High School in two thousand seven. Ms. Brymer is a caregiver for her fiance, Stephen Hordisky, who served in the Army as a member of a special support team. Mr. Hordisky was injured while deployed to Afghanistan and subsequently endures post-traumatic stress disorder. Ms. Brymer finds being a veteran caregiver to be extremely rewarding. She assists her fiance by taking him to appointments at Fort Meade and ensuring medications are readily available and administered as needed. Ms. Brymer selflessly supports her fiance through trying moments and serves as a calming president, a presence during traumatic flashbacks. Ms. Brymer takes great pride in assisting her fiance, who has given so much in service to our country. She finds great purpose in ensuring that her fiance has a high quality of life while providing a secure and happy home for their two children. In addition to being a grateful veteran caregiver, Ms. Brymer is also a thrive consultant who works with others to increase their quality of life as well. Ms. Brymer has been humbly serving our country as a veteran caregiver with dedication, compassion, and sacrifice, making her an excellent Hidden Hero of the Month. Her service to our veteran community makes her deserving of this honor, and we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you, Jessica Brymer. Number five is to confirm the appointment of Dale Tech as Public Works Director and authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign an employment contract. And I'd like to go to Jerry Wright.
I'd like to make the motion to confirm the appointment of Dale Tech as Public Works Director and to authorize the Mayor and Finance Officer to sign the employment contract.
Second by Steve Laurenti. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of this confirmation, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now, number six, we'll have the swearing-in of Dale Tech down front. I, Dale Tech.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support and defend.
that I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
against all enemies.
against all enemies.
foreign and domestic.
foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith.
that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same.
and allegiance to the same.
that I take this obligation freely.
that I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation.
without any mental reservation.
or for the purpose of evasion.
or for the purpose of evasion.
that I will faithfully.
that I will faithfully.
and impartially perform.
and impartially perform.
the duties of the Office of Public Works Director.
the duties of the Office of Public Works Director.
within the Office of Public Works.
within the Office of Public Works.
Rapid City, South Dakota.
Rapid City, South Dakota.
according to the law.
according to the law.
and to the best of my ability.
and to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
congratulations.
We have one speaker request form from Riley Casey. So, approach the podium and bend the microphone down so you can speak into it. Yeah, or how about a chair? Greg, Greg, could you assist? Thank you.
You want to stand on that? Want him to stand on that?
Yeah.
You want to stand on that?
Yes.
All right.
What do they look like from up there? Good, huh?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Riley Casey. I am ten years old and I go to school at South Canyon Elementary School. Last year, I became really interested in learning about beekeeping, so my mom took me to a few bee club meetings where I learned a lot about bees and beekeeping. One of the main issues is that when the city sprays, the beekeepers are unaware, so they can't protect their hives, and their bees die. So tonight, I am here to ask you guys if you can put an announcement in the local newspaper and the city parks and rec page so that the beekeepers can cover their hives and protect their bees. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Riley, would you introduce your little bee here?
And that's my sister, Emma.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, now skipping forward to item two hundred and five. A request by Sylvia Conrad for a resolution for de-annexation for property generally described as being located southwest of the current terminus of Settiville Lane. And to generally explain why we're back here again, the, this item was voted on on the April seventeenth council meeting, but there was a failure to properly notice the action, and so now we are back here again to do, do the item over again. So, would, does Mrs. Conrad have someone who would like to speak to the issue? Okay, we have a motion by Lisa Modrick to approve and a second by Steve Laurenti, and now we'll make a roll, recognize Janel Fisk.
I have really nothing to add, other than we hope that you will approve based on the discussion that we had at the April seventeenth meeting, and if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Okay, and that was Janel Fink, who works for Fisk. Is that right?
Yes, I was at Fisk, so.
Oh, brother. Okay, and now I'll recognize Sarah Hansel, who will give us the staff report.
Yes, as this item comes before you again, I just wanted to briefly restate staff's position and the Planning Commission's position on why we recommended to deny this application and why the Planning Commission unanimously decided also to recommend denial of this. We talked about at the last, at the last time this item was discussed, kind of two main ideas. One was this idea of the jurisdictional donut hole, and I would just want to reemphasize that, kind of the problems that that causes. It's not just an arbitrary boundary on a map. The jurisdictional donut hole that we have in this community represents inefficiencies in the ways that urban services are provided. And so when we look at the recommendation for this item, it really has to do with present efficiency, it has to do with the way that the city grows in the future. This property is located directly in the path of city growth, and even though it's not in the city limits and developed today, we talked about how there's no question that when this property is to be developed, that it makes so much sense for it to be in the city. So, we would just pose as staff that there really is not a good reason to de-annex it at this time if it should be in the city limits.
I have really nothing to add other than we hope that you will approve based on the discussion that we had at the April 17 meeting, and if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Okay, and that was Janel Fink, who works for Fisk. Is that right?
Yes, I was at Fisk, so...
Oh, brother. Okay, and now I'll recognize Sarah Hansel, who will give us the staff report.
Yes, as this item comes before you again, I just wanted to briefly restate staff's position and the Planning Commission's position on why we recommended to deny this application and why the Planning Commission unanimously decided also to recommend denial of this. We talked about at the last, at the last time this item was discussed, kind of two main ideas. One was this idea of the jurisdictional donut hole, and I would just want to reemphasize that, kind of the problems that that causes. It's not just an arbitrary boundary on a map. The jurisdictional donut hole that we have in this community represents inefficiencies in the ways that urban services are provided. And so when we look at the recommendation for this item, it really has to do with present efficiency, it has to do with the way that the city grows in the future. This property is located directly in the path of city growth, and even though it's not in the city limits and developed today, we talked about how there's no question that when this property is to be developed, that it makes so much sense for it to be in the city. So I, we would just pose as staff that there really is not a good reason to de-annex it at this time if it should be in the city limits in the future. The other really important aspect of this is the present use of the property. There's, there's a unanimous consensus that we want to see productive use of this property. The intended use that's been stated is to develop this with sod farming. There's nothing that being in the city jurisdiction prohibits that from happening. In fact, the property directly north of this property is in the city limits and does have sod farming uses on it currently. And I think those two things are really important, looking to the future use of this property and also the present use today. The city staff did not see a strong enough reason to approve the de-annexation, and we still firmly believe that and would like you to consider that as you make your decision this evening. There are over 30 years of annexation policy that the city has worked towards, kind of closing the gap in the valley, and so a decision to de-annex its property would really be a step backwards from that general direction over the last 30 years. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, any discussion from council? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, may I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah.
I was not in town and available at the last city council meeting when this item was heard. I did stream the meeting, and I listened to the arguments for the de-annexation, and those were the concerns, much what you described that I have is, you've described this as a donut. Is the property contiguous all the way around this piece of property in the county?
Portions of the property abutting this property are in the county, yes.
But, so how much of it is still in the county and how much of it is in the city?
This particular parcel is about 20 acres, and I don't have the acreage on the area to the south, but it's well over 100 there. It's a large portion when you look at it on the aerial map.
And so, really, you've already come prepared, because I was going to ask you basically all the questions that you've already answered, and that was when I streamed the Planning Commission and they talked about this. The issue becomes, as the city of Rapid City grows, we're trying to de-annex a parcel that we may have to turn around and try to re-annex in the future in order to provide our services that continue out. And I understand the applicant's position on, you know, wanting to de-annex it because there might be, you know, some, some minor advantages to, to having it in the county versus the city, but much to your point, Sarah, it's in the city, nothing presents, prevents it from being a sod farm. That use is permitted in its current zoning, is it not?
It is.
So the, the, the direction in which they wanted to go for the use of this property, nothing is preventing it from happening as long as it's in, within the city limits, correct?
That's correct.
Is there any benefit for the applicant to de-annex this?
I'm happy to not speak for the applicant.
Okay, yeah. Janelle, if you could, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what, what the huge push is to de-annex this when it actually does go against all of our city policies. What's the advantage for the applicant, for the city council to de-annex this property?
I don't think that it goes against all policies, but in terms of the advantages, this property has been part of the city for over 40 years, and it has not been provided any services, any public services. There's no paved street that provides access, there's no water main that provides water to this property, there's no sewer that provides, sewer main that provides sewer to this property, and they are all in excess of either the required, I want to say 400 feet that would require extension, or they're beyond the developable area as far as the sewer goes, it would require the bore, or either a bore and/or something different under the creek and through a flood hazard area.
Currently, though, we have other properties that meet that same criteria, so, so that's, that's not an advantage. I mean, getting outside is not going to all of a sudden have the county provide sewer, and the county's not going to provide water, so what's the advantage for the applicant to de-annex this?
The taxes will be less. Currently, the city collects drainage basin fees on this property and doesn't serve benefit from that, general taxes, and then it would allow the landowner, or the prospective landowner to operate under one set of rules, county rules only, and not the overlapping jurisdiction of city and county regulation as well as tax issues.
So when you say rules, though, the city has jurisdiction three miles out, so what county rules are you referring to?
The, the county regulates the zoning and the use of the property, and the county zoning for General Ag is, is not exactly the same as, as the city, so it allows them to just operate under one set of rules instead of two sets of rules or regulations.
You know, again, we have a lot of other properties that fit the same description that are within the city limits. I just, I'm going to have to support the Planning Commission's stance on this and the city's recommendation to not de-annex this, so, but thank you for the discussion and thank you for the answers.
Any further discussion on this item? We have a motion for approval. All in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Here.
Motion carries with one no. Okay, now we're back on to the non-public hearing items, items eight through 201. There are no speaker requests for any of the items eight through 40, so we won't have a public comment. That'll take us on to consent items eight through 40. Does the council have items to pull in the consent calendar? Let's go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item number 36, please.
Okay, Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 27, please.
Jerry Wright. Hey, any other requests? So then I could use a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items 27, 33, and 36, and we have a motion for that by Brad Estes. Second by Steve Laurenti. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. So on to item 27, is to authorize staff to seek proposals for the Sheridan Lake Road traffic study, and we'll go to Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, first, I would like to make a motion to approve and retain the floor if I can get a second.
Okay, you have a second to that motion by Jerry Wright. Then go ahead.
Question to Dale Tech, our new Public Works Director, please.
Yes, you may. Dale Tech's first Public Works Director question. Go ahead.
It's official. So Dale, we talked about this a little bit in Public Works, but can you explain for the group and for the public what this study will do?
Certainly, this agenda item is actually to seek proposals to hire a consultant to do a traffic study on Sheridan Lake Road roughly from Corral Drive out to Alberta Drive. I anticipate that will expand to other street connections in that study area. What it's going to do is look at existing as well as future conditions, and when I say future, year 2040, traffic conditions on Sheridan Lake Road. Based on the traffic modeling that'll be done as part of the data collection phase, there'll be some recommendations for improvements then along Sheridan Lake Road if additional lanes are needed, if turning lanes and such are needed, this study will, will paint that picture.
Okay. Could you talk a little bit about the cooperation with the county and the city on this study?
Actually, the county is not an active participant in the study, however, we, when I say active participant, they're not funding any of it, it's entirely through the city. We will utilize their data, they do traffic counts just as well as the city does, so we'll take the counts that they have for existing conditions as well as the counts that we do internally and utilize all that data to do some traffic modeling.
So in the spirit of cooperation with the county, we will share this data with the county, because a good portion of that Sheridan Lake Road study is currently on county road.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. This, this study will be for their benefit just as well as it is for ours.
Okay, very good. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom. Thank you, Mayor. A question for the Public Works Director?
Yes.
Dale, could you explain to us a little bit of the rationale why we don't have the current city staff doing a study similar to this?
Yeah, the, the effort involved in this is beyond the expertise of staff. Traffic modeling is a, is a very complicated programming issue. We don't have the hardware or software package to be able to do that, modeling forecasting, so that's the main reason that we use consultants for this type of work.
Thank you. Yield.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I continue with follow-up questions of Mr. Dale Tech?
Yes, please.
Dale, and I, you may have said it, because I was kind of reading ahead here, but I kind of picked up on the question of Alderman Solomon, who said that we would be sharing this study with the county. Is the county paying any portion of this study?
They are not.
Have they been approached to participate in the cost sharing of this?
They have not, but this is not out of the ordinary. When we look at corridors, we look not only, we look outside of our limits, too. You have to do that to be able to look at growth areas. So it's not out of the ordinary to do this. We have not approached the county for that.
So the, the work that's done, the coordination that the city has had with the county before is when the city orders in a study looking at one of our corridors, the emphasis or hope for the cooperation with the county is that when we do take under a project on Sheridan Lake Road, it goes in conjunction with the county working on the continuation of that road into their...
Correct. As I stated earlier, though, this looks out to the year 2040, and I think it would be a reasonable assumption to assume that the city is going to extend beyond this study area by the time we get to the year 2040. So it'll be most useful for the city and our planning effort in our transportation corridors rather than the county in the next few years.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I yield.
Okay, motion on the floors for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. On to item number 33, which is to acknowledge the update on the Mount Rushmore Road reconstruction Vision Funds. We'll go to Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just one of those good news moments, and I want to thank Mr. Tech as our new Public Works Director for the report that was sent to us and dated and signed, for that matter, giving the community good news that the funding for Rushmore Road improvements funded by Vision are within budget, and with Phase 1 completed and Phase 2 and 3 in the active phase, it appears that we have approximately $293,000 left in the contingency, so I think that's very good news compared to what we heard a couple of years ago. So if Dale would like to elaborate, if he wishes, if not, I just want to say job well done, and thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to acknowledge by Scott and second by Laurenti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now on to item 36, which is a request by Donald Leonard for a petition for the organization and incorporation Crowell Court Road District. And we will go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Dale Tech a question or two on this?
Please.
Dale, I'm going to show my ignorance on this one, or maybe I'm reading too much into it. When I read a request for a petition for the organization and incorporation of the Crowell Court Road District, what is that?
This is a new thing.
Okay.
As I understand it, the county is, it's their jurisdiction to create road districts. I believe that there was either a change in state law or the state law was not being properly administered by the county, and I believe that the county auditor has recently noticed the city that the county has to seek approval from the city if it's in our jurisdiction, our three-mile jurisdiction, for approval of this. The city won't have any dealings with this road district, but we, I think it would be in everyone's best interest to approve this, to move it along, and let the county process go through its process to decide whether or not this is a valid road district. So this, this is a procedural thing, and I would say anything in our three-mile jurisdiction will be coming before you in the future, and city staff doesn't see any issues with approving these types of things.
Okay, so if I'm understanding what you're saying, the, this is not in the city limits at this time. This is within our three-mile boundary.
Correct.
This is a road district being created by the county? Can you explain for us Rapid Cityans what a road district is and does?
The Pennington County has a road system, and for roads to be added to the system, the Board of County Commissioners has to take action to add each individual road. The Pennington County, I believe, has had a moratorium since 1993 where they don't add roads on their system anymore. There are a few exceptions. So people that live in the county that have a public road that is not on the county road system can by state statute create their own road district. So that means they can take their tax dollars that the county was collecting, which is called unorganized road tax, they can take those tax dollars and use on their own road as they see fit. So that is what the creation of a road district is, is it gives a groups, a group of citizens the ability to tax themselves to make improvements to their public road.
Okay. Is the road district that's created and governed by the local taxpayers because it's their tax dollars, is it overseen by the county so that it meets minimum requirements?
I believe the, the only requirements that it's meant is in the organization, and then I'm certain they must have a, an elected board or a president or something like that, and have to have those in place annually, and then I'm assuming there's some annual reporting that is back to the county. Other than what they spend the tax dollars on to fix their roads, I don't know that that is even looked at on the county level.
All right. Thank you for the questions. I'm, I'm getting ready to yield. My only concern with looking at this, and thank you for letting me know, my ignorance is probably shared by many people tonight, just myself, but my concern is, is that I know since I've been on the city council, we talk about when we annex property into the city and we have to take over those roads that were built in the county, or, from what I understand you say tonight, by a local road district, and then when the city does annex property, we have to take over the maintenance and the, and the improvement and the cost of those roads.
Correct. Typically, the roads are constructed, they exist. The, the road districts typically aren't outbuilding new roads. They are public right-of-way that was dedicated and a road was built in it probably during some plating process that occurred at some point in the distant past. So the roads exist, if they didn't exist, there would be no reason to have a road district.
So the road districts is created more to maintain or provide services for that road?
Precisely.
Oh, okay, so it's not new roads going under construction or anything?
Correct. Not typically.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Jerry Wright.
Another question, Dale. I think it's going to be a question. This is a taxing district authorized under state statute, I believe, correct?
That is correct.
And when they become a district, they can levy tax within their district upon their owners within that district to improve or maintain their roads, correct?
That's correct.
When they're annexed, does that district dissolve or does it continue for perpetuity unless it is dissolved by the corporation, that corporation?
That's a good question, and I don't know that I know the answer to that. Typically, when the city annexes property and there's public right-of-way, the city of Rapid City assumes the jurisdiction and maintenance of all public right-of-way.
But it, excuse me, but it could be like where we have annexed property that has a sanitary district pre-established, we can't touch that. We have to either buy them out or let them coexist, correct? Is this similar?
Sanitary district is different than a road district in the way that they operate and the way that they're organized.
But their perpetuity or their existence, okay, maybe you can answer. Thank you.
I, I cannot answer specifically, however, I'm guessing that part of the reason the city has to sign off on it if it's within a certain area of the city is because, like, if they had outstanding debt or something, we would probably have to address that in some way or it would have to continue. And we would, I would, but I would need time to look at what the requirements are, but you're right that in state law, when there is an entity like this and they're annexed, there is general, generally a way for the city to either buy them out or disband it. I don't think we would have to rebuy the roadways like we would have to buy the infrastructure for a sewer district, but we may if there was debt or something, resolve that. The reality is if we, if we annex an area that's in a road district and we offer to pick up the maintenance of the road, more than likely they're going to want to disband the road district themselves and annex in because the only reason they're forming a road district right now is if they don't, there's nobody to maintain their roads. So they want, they have to do that, but that's going to be an additional cost to them, really, down the road when there's maintenance or, or things that need to be done. So if they ever come to the point where they need to be or could be annexed in by the city and we would agree to pick up the road maintenance and rebuild the roads in the future when they need work, my guess is they're going to disband the road district and agree to be annexed.
So I assume since... So I assume since we were kind of discussing this, may I ask another question? Do we have a motion on this yet?
No.
I make a motion to postpone this to the next one. I'm sorry? Okay.
Okay, we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm not ready to make a motion. I appreciate all the comments everybody's had. But I see that any new road, this doesn't change the requirements of an entity that is going to go out and plat property within the three mile, and they're going to have to put roads in according to our standards. That doesn't change, this doesn't change that at all. So I look at this as a good deal, at least with a road that's out there that doesn't fall under that. At least you've got a group of people who want to have the ability to raise the funds and take care of their road. I mean, if we, when we annex, every property we've annexed, that road becomes ours. But at least any new roads or any new plating, they still have to follow the rules we have. So it's not like there's going to be more roads that don't meet the standards. And I think it's kind of refreshing that you see a group that actually want to figure out a mechanism to take care of their road until such time that happens. But I, I think, I think the real answers to all your guys' concerns need to be answered before we vote on this, but I see this as kind of a good thing.
Well, I might be wrong, but I was expecting the question, I thought we were leading up to the question, is there a potential in a future annexation to have those residents out there doubly taxed, one by the road district and one by the city?
Well, it may, but yeah, there could be a potential. I mean, look, there's, there are people that live in the city of Rapid City. They're in the Rapid Valley Sanitary District. The district is a separate legal entity. Again, there are ways to resolve this. We're worrying about a problem that may never even happen, but if it does happen, it's a couple of years down the road. We're not going to go out there and maintain these roads. So to, I think, build on what Brad was trying to get to, are you really going to tell, block these people from maintaining their roads because you're worried that ten years down the road, or fifteen years, when we possibly annex, there might be some unforeseen consequences? I can go through and look at what the rules are for annexation of a road district, but does it really matter? Because again, are you going to prevent these people from maintaining their roads for that period of time because you're concerned about something that may potentially happen?
Okay, we'll get back in order here and go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to inform the council that I've had some limited experience, and Dale can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've got a road district that was recently resolved, dissolved out in the Rapid Valley area. And Dale, if I correct, and saying, and I wish Sarah Hensel was in the room because she was involved with this directly. But if I remember correctly, it was something like Tinton Lane. They had a road district up there, and they dissolved it. Forgive me if I got the wrong street, but I know we've had a road district out there already.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. I don't recall.
And I'm okay with delaying this a little bit, but not really that comfortable, but delaying it. But the idea is that what Joel has addressed for the group already, we've gone through this a number of times. If there is more study and more involved, getting down into the weeds of this, I'm okay with that. But we're already doing this now in other areas, and especially within the city of Rapid City. So I don't know what the objection is. Thank you.
Okay, Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I do see here that the Pennington County Highway Department has already reviewed this, and they recommend approval of this road district. They have no problem with it having that jurisdiction over it. My question would be for Dale Tech in that if we delay this for any reason, do you happen to know what it would do to the county process on their end? I mean, it looks like these people are well organized. They're ready to go. It's been through their review process. This is just a formality that we have forgotten to do in the past and are now getting on board with making sure it goes, that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
You've got that exactly correct. There are dozens of road districts. In fact, I think the last count, the county had over 120 of them that exist. The county is the one that has neglected to have us approve them. So this is something that they've picked up on, that they've been negligent in. So that's why this one's coming towards you, to you tonight. Yes, it will delay them, but it's only a procedural delay. There's not, I don't believe it has to go to any special public hearing on the county side. So it will delay them until whatever future date that you want to delay them to.
How might that affect the, these residents?
I would say it'd be a pretty minor impact to them.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second by Jason Solomon.
I yield.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask a follow-up question of Mr. Dale Tech?
Please.
Thank you. I thought Alderwoman Charity Doyle was getting to the question that I was sitting on, because I had one more follow-up question, Dale, and she was headed down that path. Since you said this is a procedural thing, and the county just simply hasn't gone through us before, and you said if we wanted to continue it for consideration, it would not have a huge impact on the creation of this road district for those county residents, my question is, since this is procedural, if we vote no, what does that, I mean, I would think that there's still a procedure that the city voted no, but it's still a county thing, so that the county would still have a hearing. So really, we don't want to really block anything from happening when this is a normal thing that's gone on for a while, do we?
Yeah, I wouldn't see, staff's recommendation is to approve. We don't see any reason to do any future vetting of this. Yeah, I would agree with your assessment.
So, so do you have an answer? I mean, just on the off-chance that the city council voted, since it's procedural, it really doesn't stop any, I mean, we're not really sitting on any kind of power trip here or anything, right?
Well, the state statute, I believe, does read that the city has to approve it. Must first be approved by the city.
Well, I'm in favor, from the discussion that we've had tonight, and first of all, thank you for the great discussion, because this truly was a new item for me. But after listening from our city attorney and listening to the discussion up here, I think Alderman Estes made a very, very valid point of why would we want to stop residents from wanting to take care of their own roads? I can support this going forward with an approval tonight. Thank you.
Jerry Wright. Joel Landin, any further? Okay, motion, motion on the floors for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Jerry Wright. And that takes us through consent. And now on to non-consent items, items forty-one through 201. Open public comment on those items. We have one speaker requests by Kent Hague. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council. My name's Kent Hague, representing Freeland Ranch Affordable Housing Subdivision. I apologize, I gave you a letter tonight with some attachments that I thought had gone out about last Tuesday. I apologize, I don't believe it did go out for some reason. So I just found that out today. But even though I did plan to also give you this hard copy this evening, last city council meeting, the county, or the city council had considered the recommendation of the Legal and Finance Committee to provide a $75,000 grant from the CDBG funds to the Freeland Ranch project. And as stated in the letter, it's, the $75,000 grant is critical to keeping the traffic studies, the engineering that's now to the point where it can actually design specific roads because so much other testing is now completed, soils testing, geotech, all those types of things, even archaeological have been completed at this time to get this parcel ready for development. This parcel is truly designed after a number of other subdivisions in the United States for affordable housing. They're multi-societonomic groupings of homes. The whole subdivision will accommodate at least, and perhaps I think significantly more, than 51% of affordable housing in its, in its boundaries. It's 128 acres total. Part of it, that would be taken out pieces at a time, is the plan where, at a raw land price, the land would be purchased by the, by the nonprofit Freeland Ranch, Inc., that has already been formed. It then could turn around and work with a public-private partnership with the city. And this would be the largest subdivision of its kind specifically made for affordable and workforce housing. And this is not an affordable, we always get caught up in the many definitions of affordable, which Barb Garcia can more clearly explain, but these are for 40% of median income, well below the poverty level and up. It is not homeless housing, but it is affordable housing for young, young families, families in need, and so forth. And that is the intent of this area. So we ask your support for this. The $75,000 is not a great deal of money in the grand scope of things, however, it is critical timing for it right now to keep the engineering, to keep the various studies moving forward. We personally, my brothers and I, me, have put many, many hours, probably, well, I would say at least a couple hundred hours in this already, at no charge, of course, to try to get this, get this off the ground. And it will be, like I say, it will be controlled by the nonprofit, and those profits from the sale of land will go and stay with the nonprofit to continue the development and long-term maintenance and care of this whole subdivision.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public comment, and we'll go to ordinances, starting with item number forty-one. Second reading ordinance number 6178, an ordinance to update campaign finance disclosure requirements by amending chapter 2.32 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Recommendation from committees to approve? Motion by Wright, second by Estes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number forty-two, second reading ordinance number 6179, an ordinance to update references to the Convention and Visitors Bureau related to Business Improvement District Number One by amending chapter 3.24 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Recommendation was approval. I think we had a motion by Darla Drew and a second by Solomon. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item by the second, number forty-two. Let's make that one forty-two A. How about if we do that? Forty-two A is first reading ordinance 6173, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Mandy Schmierer for Penny Lind for rezoning from Office Commercial District to General Commercial District for property described as being located southwest of the intersection of Neal Street and Bernice Street. Recommendation from approval, approve in conjunction with planned development designation file 17PD016. Motion by Wright, second by Modric for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Number forty-three, first reading ordinance 6174, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for DKEAL LLC for a rezoning from General Agricultural District to Low Density Residential District One for property described as being located north of the intersection of Bethpage Drive and Prestwick Road. Recommendation is for approval. Motion by Modric, second by Wright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item forty-four, first reading ordinance 6175. These all sound the same. First reading ordinance 6175, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for Yanni Jorgas for a rezoning of General Ag District to Low Density Residential District Two for property described as being located southeast of the intersection of Overview Lane and Nugget Gulch Drive. Recommendation from, was, staff recommends that this item be continued to June 5, 2017, city council meeting at the applicant's request. Motion to that effect from Wright and a second by Modric. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Number forty-five, first reading ordinance 6176, an ordinance amending section 1706 of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for Sitkra LLC for a rezoning from no-use District to Low Density Residential District Two for property generally described as being located north of the current terminus of Kyle Street. Recommendation from committee, approve in conjunction with annexation file 17AN004. Motion by Wright, second by Estes. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item forty-six, first reading ordinance 6177, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for Salador Ranches Incorporated for a rezoning from no-use district to low-density residential district for property described as being located west of the northernmost section of Prestwick Road. Recommendation from committee, approve in conjunction with annexation file 17AN003. Motion by Solomon, second by Estes. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item forty-seven, first reading ordinance 6181, an ordinance regarding supplemental appropriation number two for 2017. Recommendations for approval? Motion by Wright, second by Modric. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Number forty-eight, first reading ordinance 6112, an ordinance to amend provisions concerning zoning applications by the city by amending section 17.54.040 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Recommendation is for approval?
No.
Motion by Wright.
Second.
Second by Estes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to Community Planning and Development Services items, starting with number forty-nine. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number forty-nine is a request by Shannon Vagnets for Troy Tremetta for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed Lot One and Lot Two of Skyline Ranch subdivision, generally described as being located west of the intersection of Tower Road and Skyline Drive. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second.
Second by Estes, and we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just be voting no on this because I'm just opposed to further development along Skyline Drive. So it's just a, I guess, a vote of protest. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floors for approval. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes with one no. Next item, please.
Item number fifty, Mayor, is a request by KTM Design Solutions, Inc., for Yanni Jorgas for preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots A, B, C, and D of Stony Creek South Number Two subdivision, generally described as being located southeast of the intersection of Overview Lane and Nugget Gulch Road. I make a motion that this item be continued to the June 5 city council meeting per the applicant's request.
Okay, the second was by Laurenti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number fifty-one is a request by KTM Design Solutions, Inc., for Eastern Slope Land Corp. for preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots one through seventeen of the blocks are described in the item number, generally described as being located at the current terminus of Chalkstone, Brook Street, and Country Road. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second by Jerry Wright, and we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to abstain from this. I have an interest in this property. Thank you.
Okay. Recommendation is to approve with stipulations. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes with one abstention.
Item number fifty-two is a request by KTM Design Solutions, Inc., for DKEAL, Inc., for preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots five through fifteen of Block Nine and lots one and two of Block Seventeen of Red Rock Estates, generally described as being located west of the northernmost section of Prestwick Road. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second.
Second by Solomon. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. It'll take us on to Legal and Finance Committee items, number 53, and we'll go to Legal Finance Chair, John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 53, amend the request for reallocation of the FY 2016 and 17 Community Development Block Grants, CDBG, contingency funds, recommendations by awarding $75,000 to Freeland Ranch Community, Inc., out of the approximately $249,000 allocated to demolition and land acquisition for small affordable housing, and recommend approval of the funding allocation as amended. And I recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, second by Lisa Modrick, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had a couple questions from citizens and constituents in our ward, and just to get it on the record, if Alderman Roberts wouldn't mind answering a couple of questions, may I direct a couple of questions at?
Certainly may, if you choose to answer.
Thank you. John, and you can answer or not, but since you made the motion, the questions that are going out there, and so I'll just pose them so that you can answer them, and we'll just get it on the record. Do you have the listing to sell any of these lots in Freeland Ranch at this time?
No, I do not.
Okay. Do you have any listings for selling any property for the Hags?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
And so, in your words, do, I mean, you abstained from the one, two above this, why do you think that this is not, or why, what is your opinion why this is not a conflict of interest for you?
The one above it I abstain from because I actually have the listing on that property. And in my opinion, and from talking to some realtors that have been on this city council in the past, it has never been an issue if you're voting on something that you do not have an interest in, the listing or a monetary interest in. Now, I have a lot of clients that bring a lot of things across this dais, and if I have to abstain from every client that I work with, it could get a little bit problematic. But as long as I don't have a monetary interest in my client's property that's out there, I don't believe I have to abstain, and neither does my attorney.
Thank you, John. I yield the floor.
Okay. Motion on the table is for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no.
No.
I think, let's have a roll.
Solomon.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Modrick.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Laurenti.
Aye.
Scott.
No.
Estes.
No.
Doyle.
No.
Motion passes 6 to 4.
All right. That takes us through Legal Finance items. Now, items 54 through 200 are all alcoholic beverage license reissuance, and since I didn't talk to him beforehand, we'll ask Police Chief Carl Jagoras if there are any issues with the reissuance from a background standpoint. Chief Jagoras?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I have reviewed all of the alcohol licenses that are listed here and have no concerns.
Okay. So hearing that, we could entertain a motion to approve 54 through 200. Moved by Laurenti, second by Wright. All in favor of approval of those items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Takes us on to item 201, to acknowledge public warning system enhancements in Rapid City and Pennington County. We'll go to interim fire chief, Rod Seals.
Actually, the Rapid City Pennington County Emergency Manager is here to do this presentation.
Okay, we'll hear from Dustin Willett then, from Emergency Management.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Allender, members of the Rapid City Council. Dustin Willett, as interim chief Seals stated, I'm the Rapid City Pennington County Emergency Manager. I won't take too much of your time, just a quick presentation on where we've moved with our public warning system. The public warning system is multifaceted. We have lots of different technologies that we use to reach the public during times of disaster, when there are things going on that pose a direct threat to people's health and safety. One of the pieces that has traditionally been missing from how we warn people is calling back landline numbers within a specific geo-fenced area. We've got just about everything else covered, whether it be NOAA Weather Radio, All Hazards Radio, wireless priority messaging where we can hit cell phones, the emergency alert system, which covers broadcast, TV, cable, radio. So all of that's been in place for a long time. What we did was purchased a messaging service that puts all of that into one, basically cloud-based interface, so anytime an authorized person has any type of access to the internet, we can author a single message. We use what we call Common Alert Protocol, a single message that disseminates over all of those channels, basically simultaneously. What we're, what I, the reason I came before you tonight is, again, we've never had the ability within Emergency Management to call back landlines. That's a new feature, and we're going to be rolling that out in some press releases, and we thought it would be a good idea with direction from our Emergency Management Users' Board to present that to you so that you knew what was happening if constituents came up to you and talked to you about our warning system and what that was. So not only have we preloaded the system with commercially available data, so White Page, Yellow Page data, that type of stuff that represents landline numbers, there's also an opt-in feature, so people can choose with this system which phone numbers that they own are contacted in which order. Or if they're, if they have, if they're monitoring a parent, or a loved one, or someone that they care for in the area, but maybe they live out of the area, they can opt in their out-of-state phone number to get warnings for the people that live here that they're concerned about, within reason. So, anyway, just a quick information item to let you know that we're moving forward with an enhancement to all the tools we already have in the proverbial toolbox to alert the public, and to just kind of give you a heads-up that we were going to be rolling that out in some press releases, and encouraging people to look at that system and opt in to the, to customize it to their needs. They don't have to opt in, but if they want to customize it, if they want to add or change the way that the system contacts them, they certainly have the ability to do that. Be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dustin. We'll go to Amanda Scott.
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge and retain the floor, if I can get a second.
Okay, we have a second from Steve Laurenti. Go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you, Dustin, for this update. So I'm trying to get my head wrapped around this. You said it's an enhancement, and it's about calling back on landlines.
Mm-hmm.
So is this, is this like, and I'm trying to envision this, is this like, I call a nine, I make a 911 call, and then it can call me back? Or this is like, a tornado is coming, and I get a call on my landline?
The second.
The second. Okay. So this is, and that's why it's titled the Public Warning System, so we don't have to necessarily try to listen for the, for lack of a better word, the shouting of the town choir, crier out there with our sirens and everything else. We would actually get a phone call.
I would hope that you would still listen to the outdoor public warning sirens.
Well, I can tell you where I live, it's hard to hear, so.
Yep. So, so an outdoor, or not outdoor, I'm sorry. Public warning, all the tools that we use are designed to reach people in different circumstances. So we look at our special needs populations, we look at people that communicate differently, we look at people that are outside enjoying sports, we look at people that are inside watching TV. Again, the intent is to reach as many citizens as quickly as possible with the right message at the right time, with the right protective actions. And so we look at how can we do that the most effective, efficient, and cost-effective way that we can.
So in this enhancement that it calls out on landlines, does it make multiple calls at one time with like, a recorded message or something? Or is it one call at, I can't imagine that it's one call at a time when you're trying to broadcast out and...
So it would be a very rare occurrence to want to try to reach all 100,000 people in Pennington County at the exact same time. But hypothetically, to address your question, should we need to try to message all 100,000 people in Pennington County, the system is capable of making all those calls in approximately 10 minutes.
Oh, nice. That's not too bad. And so then you also mentioned specifically landlines, so my final question that I have for you is, because you also mentioned people can opt in if they want to, can they opt in with a cellphone number if they're on the go, or is it only landlines?
Nope, they can absolutely, and that's one of the encouragements, is that they go in and actually put in their cellular contact numbers. We do have, though, what we call WPS, or Wireless Messaging, so any cellphone, any enabled cellphone, any cellphone that has the circuitry in it, most modern cellphones do, if you're within range of a cell tower, and that cell tower is included in our warning area, that cell tower will send that message to that cellphone automatically. So we do have some tools already in place to reach cellphones. The great thing about that is, is obviously we have a large transient population in the summertime with our tourists, and the people that come and go, obviously there's a time in August where we have a lot of people coming and going, and the wireless system that we have, you don't have to opt into, somebody that just rides in, or somebody that drives into the area, if they're in an affected area, it will hit their cellphone. So it's a pretty powerful tool.
Great. Well, thank you, and thank you for the follow-up information. Thank you, Mayor.
Jerry Wright.
Dustin, sometime back at CIP, we talked about the upgrade of the sirens. What's the status on that?
So the, as of last week, everything is in operational. The old system is sitting on the floor of my office. So we are, we are where we need to be.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mayor. I sit on this board, Users' Board, on behalf of the city council, and Jason, using the landlines, you kind of threw me for a loop there, but, so I'm going to ask you some questions because, are we talking about the reverse 911?
Yes.
Okay. So if I live in Founder's Park, and over here, and everybody in that area registers their cellphone that they live in that area, and there's a fire, and there's an evacuation notice, you could send an evacuation notice to everybody in that area on their cellphone, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. They don't have, it doesn't have to have anything to do with the landline.
Nope.
So they, so if they're at work, they can know that they can't go home.
Yep.
So if there's a water line break on Enchantment, and everybody that registered their phone on Enchantment, and there's a boil water deal, you could send a text, and everybody will know, don't drink the water, boil it.
Yeah, let me, we got a little muddy in there in terms of like, so water main break that results in a boil water message, you know, something that's of concern.
Of health.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah. And protocol-wise, there's just got to be a few people who could decide what messages go out, because you don't want a councilperson saying, hey, we're going to have a pancake breakfast over here Tuesday on...
So one of the things, as you're well aware, we are creating a duty officer program so that we always have someone 24/7, regardless of whether I'm at training, or I'm on vacation, as well as my deputy. We're creating a duty officer program so that we always have somebody there that's able to push the proverbial button. Right now, for this entire system, there's only two people that, right now, are authorized to author those messages, and so we're expanding that. But there's a difference between authoring the message, hitting the button, and who has the authority to call for that. So historically, it has been the department heads and/or elected officials in charge of public safety organizations. So the fire chief, the police chief, the sheriff, my office, those have typically been the folks that have said, hey, this meets the threshold, this is something that needs to happen, let's put this message out. So that's historically been the group that has, that have made those decisions in terms of when we press the proverbial button.
Great. But I want to, and I want to touch base on one of the features that I think that this has, is that if you have an elderly parent that lives in, well, whatever address in Rapid City, and you, and she has children that live in Rapid, and children that live in Minnesota, those children's cellphone numbers can be registered on that address so that you know if your mother's going to be evacuated, which is, I think, is a great deal. So if there's an evacuation, you know that something's happening at your relative's place. So I think that's really a benefit to the people of Rapid. So, thank you, Dustin. I yield, Mayor.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Dustin, another question for you. There was a link to your attachment that had everbridge.com. Are you recommending we download that app as well?
Yep, absolutely. And that, again, I wanted to come to you at the recommendation of Councilman Estes prior to us pushing that out, and people asking you, hey, what's this app? What's this service? What's this, what's this thing that we're doing? But absolutely, as we roll this out, as we push this out, what the app allows is for push notifications. It's just another dissemination, another channel that we can push those notifications out. The other thing is, is there's a side to this, a benefit, and I don't, again, want to take too much of your time, there's the public alert, public warning side of this software. It also is, the license that we have gives us virtually unlimited capability to create message groups internally within the city and the county. So as an example, my office uses it for EOC callbacks. So the people that we have that will come work in the Emergency Operations Center, we created that list, that group within this system, and so we can specifically message that group, say, hey, come back, we need you in the EOC. Pennington County at this, at this point, is actually using it for their employee notification system, all 600-plus employees in Pennington County. If there's some reason that the county needs to close for severe weather, or something along those lines, that's the system that we use to notify every county employee of a message like that. So there's some internal government side, city-county government side that's available, as well as the public-facing side and the improvement to public warning. So it's a pretty robust system. There's features that we're going to be rolling out and exploring probably for a fair amount of time to come.
Thank you. Just a follow-up, I downloaded the app. I see I've got to do some login and registry and all of that stuff, so I appreciate that. And then that will also be in part of the press release as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I yield.
Okay, motion on the floors to acknowledge. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
The public hearing items, items 202 through 205. Open and close the public hearing. There are no speaker requests. Continued public hearing consent items, items 202. Anyone like to pull that item?
So, I'd like to pull that.
Okay. Okay, item 202, a request by Doyle Estes and Kathy Johnson for DTH LLC for a resolution approving revision number two, project plan reallocation project costs for tax increment District 54, for property generally described as being located north of Mall Drive and west of Haynes Avenue. We'll go to Lisa Modrick.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge why I pulled this, and that's that it has been requested to continue to Legal and Finance on May 31, and it did end up in this agenda, and I know it's being followed, so I wanted to make sure we acknowledged that there's more information coming, and it's moving back to Legal and Finance.
Okay, so can we have a motion to move it to May 31, then?
This one moves it to June 5. To the next.
Okay, who will give me a motion to move it to the Legal Finance Committee on May 31?
Point of order.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the Chief Financial Officer can enlighten you. I think these type of notices, they have to be noticed on both the Legal and Finance, as well as the city council agendas of this one. May I ask Pauline Sumption a question, please?
Might as well.
Thank you, Pauline. Could you give a brief explanation of, is it proper to go ahead and send this back to Legal and Finance, or is it proper to send this to the next city council meeting?
Thank you for the question. This is on the agenda tonight because the Legal and Finance Committee recommended to continue it to May 31. The motion needs to be to continue it until the June 5 council meeting because this was originally noticed for two meetings ago. So every time it gets continued, those people that have been noticed, whether they saw it in the paper, or whatever, this is their, or their notice then that's been continued. So they don't show up thinking, how come it's not, nothing's being done with it? So this is just a step in the process because of the whole public hearing part of it.
Jerry Wright.
Okay, but will it be on the Legal and Finance agenda on the 31st? Okay, thank you. That's all we need.
Mayor, I need to...
I just want someone to give you a motion to, to move it to the June 5th City Council meeting. Okay, I have a motion by Lisa Modrick and a second by Jerry Wright. Jerry, do you need to speak? Okay. The motion is to move it to June 5th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. That's the end of the Continued Public Hearing Consent Items. I'll go on to Consent Public Hearing Item two-oh-three, and Pauline Sumption wants to pull that one. So, let's go to Pauline Sumption, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had two property owners come in and pay their assessments for a total of four of the, of them, so we need to approve the resolution without seven, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, because those have been paid.
Okay, we have that motion by Jerry Wright and a second by Steve Lorenti. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, on to item number two-hundred-four. Second reading, Ordinance 6168 and Ordinance Amending Section seventeen point oh-six of Chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Waste Connections, Inc. a rezoning from general commercial to light industrial for property located at 2510 East St. Patrick Street. Recommendation to approve in conjunction with initial planned development file seventeen PD-014.
So, moved.
Motion by Amanda Scott and a second by Darla Drew. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to two-oh-six, the bill list. Oh, we're doing it after. Okay, Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at six million, five-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and twelve cents.
Motion by Lorenti, second by Solomon for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion for executive session by Estes, second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Make a motion? Oh, she did make a motion already? No. No, I need a motion to come out of executive session on the record. Motion by Amanda Scott, second by Lisa Modrick. We'll go to Steve Lorenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to direct staff to make a counter offer per the discussion in executive session.
Second.
Second by Jerry Wright. Any, any discussion? Motion on the table for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn by Scott, second by Lorenti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.